Good evening, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order.
Welcome you tonight to the regular meeting for the school district of Amory, and we will get things going with our consent agenda items.
I did the vouchers, so I'll make a motion to accept those.
Okay, there's a...
Uh, maybe just...
Yes.
I had one correction.
Okay.
I actually wasn't at last month's meeting.
So let's give a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, now do we want to change it?
Yeah, I think, yeah, take me off the minutes and probably, I think the date at the top is also, should be March 16th as well. It's like the first time I've ever noticed any corrections.
And all I have to say is Sid lives.
Yeah.
Sid will always be with us. That's awesome. Okay, so with those corrections, anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. And opposed? Okay. Community comments, any community comments tonight? All right, then we'll roll right on with our administrative reports. Mr. Scheel.
Good evening. I need a board member to meet and work on board policies with Cory and I. And we've had that review done by WASB, and there are several items that they suggest and, you know, to make suggestions to add and to subtract. So we would need to start doing that. I would need somebody to work with us, and we can pick a date after the meeting to start that process, and then probably over the next few months, we'd start bringing chunks of revisions to you. Cory and I would love to do it in the late afternoon, early evening, if possible. Anybody, any takers on that?
Volunteers?
I would, I could do it if it was late afternoon. I, my evenings are more.
Okay.
Okay. Sword.
Chelsea, it is.
No time to back out now.
Well, thank you, Chelsea. We'll pick some dates here and get that going.
Awesome, thanks, Chelsea.
The other item that I have to talk to you about is an update regarding property values in the district. Cardinal Glass, a very big property owner, did not like the assessment that they were given in this past year. They did challenge it, and they have won that challenge. What that means is that we could be seeing a chargeback if, as we go forward, for $10,706.64 that we have to return back to the city and county with the property taxes. So Polk County has to return money, City of Amory has to, the Lakes District, State, and even the Technical College as they go forward. So that is something that Fran Dunkinson had called me a few weeks ago, and that's the highlight of it. And I wanted you to know that's what's going on.
Okay.
And that is all that I have. Anybody, administrators, anything to add?
I just wanted to mention that we had four teams from Amory represent us at the state DI competition, and we had two teams from the intermediate school that did a really nice job. One team placing eighth place out of 19 teams at the state. We had a middle school team that did outstanding and placed fourth, and they were two and a half points away from a trip to the globals. And then we had a high school team that was second going into, after their main challenge, and then struggled a little bit with that instant challenge and placed seventh. But, so it was really nice to see our teams place in the upper half. We did not send a team to globals this year, which is, we've done sometimes, we've got up to four teams going all the way to globals, but still had a really nice experience, and I think the kids had a lot of fun. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
Okay, and I have an update on our timber harvest that I let you know that we were doing. We had bids, and we had one bid. And so we had an opening, and we have awarded the bid to Verso Corporation. And they have, they are going to allow us $2,500 for the wood that they're taking out, about 60 cords of pine, 25 cords of aspen and birch, and 40 cords of mixed hardwood. And we've been working with Jeanette Kane, our DNR forester, and so that's all ready to go. Also with the school forest, we have, the bird cam is operational, and it was even on Channel 5 news this morning. As I was getting ready, I could hear "Amory Middle School," and I'm like, "What?" And so just go to the website, and the bird cam is right there. It's open to everybody in the world now, so that's really cool.
Thanks to Clint and George for some extra help in that category.
Okay, I have a couple announcements that I just want to make our community aware of. We have our elementary carnival this Friday, which is a big event at the elementary school from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. And next Friday, May 1st, is our annual kindergarten roundup for all children that are beginning kindergarten for the 2016 school year. Parents should have been notified. Class placements have been made, and we invite anybody who did not receive kindergarten information that has a kindergarten student that will be five by September 1st to call the elementary office and schedule, or let us know that they're out there, and we will send them information.
Can I jump back in? I forgot one thing with the school forest. Is this week at the intermediate school, we're celebrating Earth Week as we have done every year, and we are doing aluminum can collection, and the proceeds would go towards our school forest funds. Any cans, just drop them off at the front door, and we'll take care of them. So if you have any out there that's sitting in your garage, drop them off. Thank you.
I should also mention that we're just going up and down, back and forth, until you tell us to stop. No, we're in the middle of the state test right now. At the middle school, we're pretty much right in the middle with sixth grades testing and eighth grades next week. I know Orlie is, the intermediate school, will be starting the new Badger test in...
Not until May?
In May 1st. And the high school is taking the ACT Aspire test next Monday on the 24th. So just about every kid in some capacity is doing some testing real soon, so.
I think it's Orr's turn again. All right, we good then? Great, thank you, everybody. Move on to our informational items. We have our actuarial study with Twyla.
The DPI requires us to have a new study at minimum every two years. If you have a major event, they suggest you have it at the point of that event. But our two-year rotation came up kind of at the point of a major event for us with the changes that happened last year. If you want to flip the slide, it, all of the hard work paid off. Our unfunded actuarial accrued liability was reduced by 3.6 million. On the left, you can see what it was at our last study, the 5.094. And with this study, the 1.442. And that is, that is wonderful. That is a good thing to see. It's what you hope for, and it's what we achieved. Yeah, there's no intention for you to read those slides. I just wanted, I pulled them from, I pulled those from each study. I just wanted you to see that in Table F, the funded ratio is on the wages earned. And in our previous study, we were just under 7% funded. With the changes we made, we're over 25% funded. And again, that is just positive and everything you want to see. Our implicit rate subsidy, this was amazing to me. In our previous study, it had values all the way through the whole chart. It just charted out. We've actually reduced it so that there is a termination in the year 2021. And the next slide, there are some of the things when Steve and I met with the actuary to talk about our plan. The factors that reduced it to those things that you saw is reducing that implicit rate subsidy the way you did. Actually, having an end date makes it calculate and have a term date. The actuary highly recommended disallowing COBRA premiums to be drawn from the retiree HRA. And there was a requirement by GAZB to use a different type of aging method. They used to use an entry-age-normal method, and now they use a unit credit. And she said it may have caused some of the drop, but it's what's required. And so everybody's drop would be in, under that new unit credit. It's the way they value. Entry-age-normal was as you aged, you got a greater value. Now, unit credit method is they just give you equal chunks along the way, is how she described it to us. So those are the reasons you see that wonderful reduction.
Okay. Any questions? Great, that's good work. Been working on that for a few years.
Yes, it is.
All right, next, the energy exemption, Mr. Scheel.
Okay, well, a week or so ago, Darren and Keith and I and George and Bill met and talked about some buildings and grounds issues, but at the same time, we were talking about the energy levy exemption. And part of the plan and the budget for next year is to not purchase a diesel bus, but to go with a propane bus and use the energy levy exemption for that purpose. Okay? And as you see here on the document that's being presented up there, I'm not going to go through the whole chart there, but towards the bottom, it says the savings that this will generate. If you scroll down, Cory, it'll show $38,780 if it is not frozen. But we'll have this, switching to a propane bus, and it's a 20-year calculation. There is savings of $38,780. And that's why it becomes eligible for an energy efficiency exemption. Okay? All right? Other, the next chart talks about how the figures and all are calculated. I'm not going to go into all that at this point. But then the next chart that is now up there, Darren and Keith asked me to come back with a list that George and Bill are aware of, of potential other items that you may wish to do for next year. Obviously, the propane bus is up there, number one, because that's, we have to cut 105,000 out of our budget, and you don't want to fall behind not getting a bus. So that's pretty much, I would assume you'll do that. Obviously, you won't take any action on this. You can't do any action on any of these until the July board meeting at the earliest. Discussion was that for bills, that we do have a 1999 van that needs to put, be put into retirement. Through discussions with Bill, the potential of possibly getting a newer-used car and then a newer-used van for that same dollar amount, we would generate a lot of savings in fuel because we send, many times, we have one staff member going to, I'll say, Wisconsin Dells. You can get a four-door sedan, smaller mile, you know, smaller car, higher mileage at 35 miles to a gallon versus a van running around at 22. So that's a combination that you can think about. Again, there's no action on this, just giving you the list here tonight. All these items are EE qualified, energy efficiency exemption eligible, and some are very big. Talking to Greg Axerson at Apex, he truly believes we need to sit down and come up with a plan possibly for the EE. We would be, you know, we are going to have budget issues again next year. There's other items that the board will have to consider there regarding budgeting. Maybe there's a way to come up with a plan over the next two years to chip away at this list of items. Okay? And any questions on that right now?
If I can just add, and Keith can too, the one thing is, what we wanted is a list of things that, when we have our building and grounds meetings, we get a list of things that we're in need of or that are getting old and that sort of thing. So Keith and I basically said, anything that we have that we can save energy on, that we can pull into an energy exemption over the next several years, not just next year. So this is, this is like the list of things that they came that we could pull out. And for the community, the energy exemption, just as a refresher, is money that we can levy outside of our revenue cap for things that we can prove, save money, and save energy, save energy, basically. So that's what these are in there. And Apex, you remember, they have to show us the, how much we save and those types of things. But, so those are things out of the entire building and grounds things? Now, if we want to add everything that we need, there'll be some major sticker shock, and I mean, we can talk about that in the future. But obviously, we're not going to be able to be putting much for our general revenue, revenue cap money into things. And I think it's always been a least policy of the boards now and in previous years to stay up on as many of these things as we can so that we're not behind the eight ball when things break. So that's where we are. All right. Sounds good. Great. Next, we have donation to Amory Band Shell. I just wanted to make a point. I don't know if you saw the email, but we got one from the community club, I think. They're building a band shell at River, at the park.
Michael Park.
Michael Park, yeah. That they're going to use, I think, for music on the river and those types of things. And they had asked, they're basically going around for donations. So I just wanted to put it up there. We normally have made it a policy not to give donations out because we don't have money to do that. So, but if somebody feels like it's something we need to put as an action item someday, that's why we listed it up there. That, just to let Mr. Scheel know if you think we should move forward on something like that, and we can talk about it as an action item down the road. But I just think, like I said, our past history has never been to really jump into that sort of thing. Make sense? Questions, comments? Okay. Okay, we can move on to our action items. And Linda's here, and we, I don't know, two weeks ago, spent the best part of three hours, the board did. Jess Smith was here, Pat was here, and Mr. Moore. There were others. Oh, Lori, she's back there. Okay, there you are. I think some of the administrators, if not all, were here. And we really went through our benefit plans and those types of things, and spent a lot of time. So we're not going to go over everything that we went through. But Linda's here to kind of explain just the options that we have to vote on tonight, and then I think some updates on some things that we had questions for. Yeah, if you could go up there and make sure the mic was on, that would be great.
Well, thanks for having me again. So good to see everybody. Okay, are we good? All right. So we have some decisions to make tonight. We received a competitive renewal with Medica, but we also have, and we'll start with the health insurance, all right? We received a competitive renewal with Medica, but we also have a very competitive offer on the table from Health Partners. We have, the renewal from Medica came in with a flat, no rate change from Medica in a second-year rate cap of 12.7%. The offer from Health Partners came in slightly under current for rates with a 9% rate cap in year two. So if we look at that, and this is for like-plan designs, there are, there's some small deviations which you were provided with prior to this meeting, but fairly, you know, comparable coverage. If we look at that over a two-year period of time, there's an annualized rate savings for the district of about $167,000 over a two-year period of time to make the transition from Medica to Health Partners. So it's not a small dollar figure to walk away from. As far as, we also talked about offering, instead of offering just one plan design for employees to choose from, to offer two different plan options. Because of the fact that the HRA, the health reimbursement account, is going away to help fund the deductible, we looked at what, you know, what it would look like if we offered two different plan designs. One, the current plan design, as we know. And the second one would be a plan that would work in conjunction with a health savings account. There's some pretty significant savings to be able to offer, to offer two plans for the employees for those that want to choose that health savings account. There would be some additional exposure, which is outlined in the summary. But if the employees are willing to take on that additional exposure, the district in this, in this recommendation would pay the same contribution toward either plan. It's just that the district would pay 88% of either plan with Health Partners. But the district would take the savings, the difference in the premium savings, and make a contribution to the employee's HSA. That contribution would be about $1,038 for single coverage and $2,200 for family coverage, $2,281 for family coverage. What other details would you like?
I think that's it. Do you guys want to take this one at a time, or should we just go through the? It's up to you how you want to deal with voting on these.
As far as voting? As far as voting, I mean, I have to abstain in any vote that includes Health Partners because I work for a facility owned by Health Partners. So I can't be involved in any of the conversation, but there are parts of it that I can. Just anything medical or dental, I have to be out of it. So if you take it as a whole, it's up to you.
Well, what if we do it as a whole, but then we can always at the end, if we don't like something, pull something out?
Fine. Yep, okay, so just keep going through it then.
Okay, all right. So any questions on the medical before I move to the dental? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, the next thing on the list is the flexible spending account, not the dental. So your flexible spending account that you have is administered through Employee Benefits Corporation. Our recommendation would be to continue with them as the administrator of the FSA, but to offer a limited FSA in addition to your current traditional FSA for employees to be able to participate in. For employees that have the health savings account plan design, for those that elect that option, that would give them the ability to put some pre-tax dollars aside for dental and vision expenses. Because you've made the decision on the medical to increase the hourly requirement to 30 hours a week in order to participate in the medical plan, we're required to change the medical, or the hourly requirement to 30 hours on the flex plan as well. That's a requirement. So that would be the next action item that we'd have to vote on is increasing that hourly requirement from 17 and a half hours to 30 hours a week.
I just want to make it clear, the reason that is is because you cannot have an HSA with a normal FSA, it can only be the limited FSA. Is that correct?
On the hourly requirement or the...
For those who, so, not the hourly requirement, but the limited FSA. For anybody who elects the HSA, the only FSA option they have is the limited, correct?
Right, correct. So it's just offering, it's just extending about that same benefit to those who choose the HSA plan design, offering a little extra tax-free benefit. Any questions on the flex before I move to the dental? All right. You received, again, another, a generous renewal with Delta Dental. If we remove adult orthodontia with your Delta Dental renewal, there's a very small increase of $923 on the Delta Dental for the 2015-16 plan year. There, when we looked at the adult orthodontia benefit, there were no employees in the prior plan year that had incurred any claims on that. So our recommendation on that would be to save some premium dollars and remove the adult orthodontia, and look at the Health Partners offer, which has an estimated annual premium decrease from current of about, of just over $6,000. It's not a huge premium difference, but it's, it's a difference, so.
$6,000 bucks?
$6,000, yeah. It's all relative, right? The other thing that, moving to Health Partners, they would provide you with a two-year rate guarantee. So the rates would be guaranteed for a two-year period of time, assuming you also moved the medical with them. Okay?
That's bundling.
That's bundling.
That's bundling. There is a benefit enhancement on that Health Partners dental that would include some extra periodontal cleanings for health conditions like those that have diabetes or some that are pregnant. If you need some extra cleanings, there's an extra benefit incorporated in the Health Partners plan. All right. Any questions on the dental? Okay. The next item then is the vision plan. Our recommendation is to remain with Delta Dental on the vision. The rates will not change. This is, the action item here would be increasing the hourly requirement to 30 hours a week to match the other benefits. Question on the vision? Okay, on the short-term disability and the long-term disability, our recommendation is to stay with National Insurance Services. There will be no rate change on the short-term disability with National Insurance Services. On the long-term disability, there's actually a slight rate decrease, savings of $489. The action items on both of these then would be also to increase that eligibility up to 30 hours a week. Questions in disability? All right. The life insurance right now is with WEA Trusts. And your life insurance plan has a special feature on it that provides a paid-up life insurance benefit for retirees. So as long, when a retiree at the district retires, as long as they continue to pay the premium to WEA Trust to age 65, their benefit becomes paid up. There are carriers that will provide retiree life insurance, but the paid-up part, that, you know, where it stops at 65, that's where we're having difficulty finding a carrier that will take that risk on. So Stace, I'm going to ask you to come up and explain a little bit on what you learned from... There's been a lot happening, and we've been getting piecemeal information from WEA Trusts, and there's just been some recent updates that she's more pervy on than I am. So I'm going to ask her to step in.
All right, super. So on the basic life insurance plan through WEA, as Linda mentioned, if somebody continues to pay premiums after they retire, when they turn age 65, they have a paid-up life insurance benefit. What we recently found out is that WEA will retain responsibility for anybody who has a paid-up life benefit. So all of your retirees who are 65 or older and are no longer paying premiums, they will keep them, okay, and continue to have benefits for them. What they won't do if you decide to move your life insurance plan is to continue benefits for any of your retirees who are under age 65. So those retirees who are still making premium payments to WEA would be without coverage if you moved. Now, we do have carriers who will likely take over responsibility for those individuals who are under 65. But the challenge is that WEA, up until this point, has not been able to give us a list of who they are. So that's kind of the current status. I continue to work with them to try to get a list, but we have been working on it for quite some time, and I haven't been successful in that yet. So that's kind of where we are today. Anything else?
Nope.
But you can stay up here if you want. All right.
So, you know, I don't know if that's an action item tonight or not because we, because we don't know, the key is, is we don't know who's on that.
Have they given us an idea when they might find that information?
They have the information.
They just won't share it with us?
Yeah.
So they might never share it with us?
I've been told that they will not share it with us, but I am pushing back because I know that there is another district out there who got the information by accident. So I'm asking for them to accidentally release it to me. Or to Mr. Scheel.
The only comment I would want to make too is that because of timelines, I mean, staff isn't going to be here all summer. We do have plans to have a general orientation meeting next Monday, and then also the very next Monday after that, specifically for the HSA. So we've got to get things going. I'm going to say, we don't have time to wait, is what I'm saying. I wish we had another board meeting between now and next Monday. That we may or may not get.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thanks. So we're to move, are you good?
Just keep going.
All right. Then the voluntary life insurance is, we've got a, we've got a great offer on the table from Unum. We can increase the, basically employees would be eligible to be able to get up to a hundred thousand dollars of life insurance with no health history, with no health questions. So we're, we would be able to increase the guarantee issue amount for employees, their spouses, and their dependents at a rate that is actually the same as what you're paying right now. So there's no rate savings here. This is a voluntary benefit, so it's an employee-paid program, but it increases the employees' flexibility to be able to purchase extra coverage if they choose. Okay? Questions on the voluntary life?
Linda, can I interrupt and ask for clarification on the, not the voluntary life, but right above that, under option number three, or is it that, Ragnar Stotman? And on the second bullet, under employee impact, so the current retirees who are under age sixty-five will likely move, could be determined on list of two on them. So they would accept our folks, is that what you're saying there?
Yeah, Unum would accept the retirees that are under age sixty-five, but, but they would have, they would have to continue to pay the premium. So it's not going to be paid up when they turn age sixty-five.
Just one thing to add there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
They have said that they likely will take responsibility, but they need to have an idea of, you know, who is covered or what the coverage amounts are before they can actually, you know, sign on paper. That's just a little caveat there.
Thank you.
So likely yes, but until we get that list.
So basically, we wouldn't know until we moved, then we'd know the numbers.
That's essentially what's going to happen.
We would have the list, I mean, either we would have the list prior to the time that we moved or you would make a decision to say, we're okay with those retirees not having coverage at all. Is it basically the decision that you would make? Right? Yeah, we wouldn't move without having a decision.
And then the very last thing on the, on the recommendations is as employers look at offering benefits with higher deductibles, another thing that they're offering alongside those plans is the option for employees to be able to purchase policies that supplement that deductible. Their, their policies called like critical illness policies or cancer accident policies. But for employees who choose, it would be completely voluntary, but for employees who choose, it would give them the ability to purchase a supplemental policy that would pay them, you know, benefits in the event. Like if, if it was an accident policy and their kid slid into home plate and broke their leg, there would be a benefit payable. And then that benefit would help them pay for their deductible. So that's something that I would recommend you consider offering on a voluntary basis to employees if they choose to participate that in that.
Are, are they able to purchase that coverage with HSA money or does that have to be outside of the HSA?
It would be outside of the HSA.
There are two other points that have been asked to remind the board to make sure that you are all on the same page. Is that on our previous meeting, a few weeks ago, we discussed that on dental, all employees would pay twelve percent. Do you have comments about that, correct? Yes.
That's what we discussed.
Okay, I want to make sure you know I'm not making that up. Or more, depends upon, because they could be at thirty-five and forty percent depending on how many hours they work. And then the other was that on page two, it is actually educator benefit instead of employee's benefit.
EBC.
Yeah, but it's still EBC, but there's a difference.
Right. Right, yep.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. I should have known better.
Okay.
No, it's important. It's absolutely important. Yeah, thank you.
Those are the two points that were reminded as well.
Okay, so how do you want to proceed?
I had a question in option three, you know, we have an estimated savings of that fourteen-eight. Where does, where do we generate that savings?
Are you talking about the life insurance?
About that basic life plan for Unum.
That would be, right now, your premium on the, the WA Trust plan is thirty-eight cents per thousand of, of life insurance coverage. With Unum, it would drop down to twenty-two cents.
Just premiums are cheaper.
But aren't the retirees paying that?
No, 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 that's outside of this.
What's that? We share in that, okay. Well, that's what I assumed, that's what I was kind of.
And part of that premium difference that you're paying is helping to fund that retiree-paid-up life.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, the yellow, the yellow highlighted ones are the ones that we talked about in the, you know, through ever. So I don't know if, if you want to, how you want to handle this.
What are our chances of getting the info from WA so we know?
Honestly, I wish I could tell you.
Doesn't sound very good, right? I mean, the, the only district that got it was by mistake.
Now, slim, denied.
Yeah.
But.
And they've known about that we were mainly denied.
We've been working on it for months.
Well, that's my only concern, because if somebody's been paying until sixty-four and a half and all of a sudden we change.
And we don't know if it's one or two.
Yeah, we have no clue, so that's, that's what we're doing.
But you're saying, it's more than likely that that person that's paying up to sixty-four and a half will still have the opportunity to do that. They will just do it a diff- or is it?
They'll have to continue with their payment.
They'll have to continue to pay, yeah.
Yeah.
There won't be a paid-up.
So after age sixty-five, they would have to continue to pay, right?
Yeah.
Where with WEA, they would be paid up after age sixty-five. Could they be not telling us because there's like zero people doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard, I, how do you know?
What did the other?
Yeah, WEA will notify them when they terminate their coverage.
Yeah. What did the other school district that got the numbers, what were their numbers like? Did you remember?
There were eight people under sixty-five that were on the plan.
Under sixty-five?
Yes.
Is that a similar-sized district as ours?
Yeah.
Just a little bit similar, just a little bit smaller.
Similar, okay. So the people that are over age sixty-five today, not, they would have a paid-up policy with WEA and that wouldn't change, nothing would go away?
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Based on what we have been told from WEA.
Okay. So the only thing in question is those number of employees that could be retired under age sixty-five that might be paying? Could be zero, could be five, could be ten, who knows?
I, I actually am having a very hard time not changing and changing at the same time. The problem, the problem I'm having is, is I feel like WEA is just trying to keep us prisoner and, and that's just not fair to everybody. But at the same time, it's the fact that we can't get the other information to actually make a really good decision, we're going to have to be, it's really difficult.
You know, I can comment on this and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is historically the way WA Trust has operated with us. So I've been involved, well, it just is. They, they don't like to share information, so.
Well, still, if, if we vote to do this, it doesn't stop us from down the road. We find out there's three of them to somehow compensate them? Or can we or we can't because that would set a precedence?
That's correct.
You don't want to be good unless you want to get into paying life insurance for everybody.
Yeah.
What is a premium, what are we talking about premium-wise on something like that? Are we talking about a couple bucks a month? Or are we talking about hundreds of dollars a month?
Twenty-two cents per thousand of coverage. So if it's, for every ten thousand dollars of coverage, that's two dollars and twenty cents, right? A month.
So even if you're talking, okay, annually or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly?
It's monthly, yeah.
What amount does a person normally carry as an average?
Well, isn't it?
We were.
Usually their salary, so let's say a hundred thousand dollars just out of. Yeah, let's say that's everybody's salary, yeah. We know that's not true, but I mean, just erring on the side of high. So that would be twenty-two dollars we're impacting, that's pretty small.
I would actually like to make a motion, since we've been, I would like to make the motion, all of the ones in yellow that were the options recommended as well as what we've looked at. I think that that is our best bet at this time with the information that we can get.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Again, I want to remind board that there's twelve percent on dental.
Yeah, it's, that's what's up there. Twelve percent, changing from, it was at zero, right?
Was it zero?
Going to twelve.
It'd be twelve, thirty-five, or forty, because it never says that up in there.
Yeah, it did. I thought it did.
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
So just on a ballpark end, the amount, I mean, it's no secret. I mean, the elephant in the room is that there's a million dollars that we're cutting and this is just one of the ways that we're being forced to do this. But what's the amount now that we will reduce out of our budget from all of these changes?
Over four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand? I mean, that's a significant amount of money. Any other discussion?
I just want to make sure that there's going to be some good training so people will understand the HSA and how that is such a wonderful benefit and a lot of people may not understand that yet.
Yeah, we're, we're on it.
Well, that's one thing with, with you folks at J. Connor, you do an excellent job. I've read some of the emails and hopefully the employees come to it because it is, an HSA is not a fearful thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, for people.
You'll find it being a good tool to use.
For people that are concerned a little bit, we did have a long discussion about HSAs and that sort of thing. And I think all of us here on the board have an HSA.
Mm-hmm.
All five of us and, and tried to alleviate the fears on that, that it's actually something that I can't see being without anymore, so, yeah. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And all abstain? Motion carries. Motion. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Glad to be with you all and I'm about to attend the Health Partners Symposium.
Mm-hmm.
That's the two Health Partners people that will be training and passing it.
Good, all right. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, guys.
It's been a long, long process and thank you for. Yep. All right, we can move on and certify our election results, Keith?
Ah, we got the chart up there and Lynn beat Darren in ninety percent of the precincts. Come on, looking at the numbers.
My goal was to beat him in all of them, but.
Yeah, yeah. In Beaver Township, he beat you and Balsam Lake. Oh, you had your, you had your shining spot, so.
Two things.
All right. You want to say your?
Oh, are we? Well, first you have to certify the results and we have to do the office, I think is how that works.
And so we are looking at a total of seven hundred and fifteen votes for Darren Van Blercombe and six hundred and eighty-nine for Lynn Blonschekan, twenty-three write-ins and sixty-six that were not either scattered or were not voted on for a total votes of fifteen oh three. And Darren and Lynn were re-elected.
So you make a motion?
I move, we accept the candidates and the election results.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, now we can do our, we don't normally do the whole fanfare here for, we don't have to, I can just sign it? All right, great, that's even better. It used to make us read it.
Yeah, it used to have.
That's okay, I, we all know how to read, so. There. Okay, ah, the approval of the high school and middle school social studies curriculum, lots of stuff on there.
Yes.
I was looking through.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that the committees have done all of their required tasks. Just to remind you that it starts with the individual teachers looking at their needs and wants and what's out there. They have to get it approved at the committee level, which at this time was social studies. Then they have to approve it with their building principal. Then it, the proposal comes to the administrative team. And then we have a meeting of the curriculum oversight committee and they, it is presented there and approved there. And this is its final stop, so I wanted you to know that they've done all the things that they needed to do. The sheet that Cory has up there, every year we always try to leave about twenty-five thousand dollars for consumables and those are items at the elementary and intermediate school that we use up every year. That's why they're called consumables and we have to reorder them. And we're really lucky, this year we came in right at the twenty-four-four. So that part you typically do not vote on, but we have to leave room for it in our curriculum budget. So the next area that we have is high school, middle school, social studies. And I believe we're going to start with middle school first and their proposal is right up there. And who's going to speak, because we have someone coming up?
Well, I can, I can start.
Okay. Can you come to the?
You do have to go up there?
Yep.
The people at home appreciate that.
So they're going to explain to you, middle school, of course, is sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and they have curriculum at each or textbook materials at each of their levels. And they'll let you know what that looks like.
I'm Mariah Oft, I'm eighth grade world geography.
I'm Matt Pedersen, I'm seventh grade civics.
And I'm Lori Lightsky, sixth grade US history.
We have chosen to go with McGraw-Hill Education. We did look for many other companies and there ended up being two large ones, Pearson and McGraw-Hill. We ended up choosing McGraw-Hill, all of us. We could have gone different companies, each one of us, but we found that McGraw-Hill had a more up-to-date online platform and some better materials that we would prefer to go with and copyright dates that were current rather than three, four, or five years old. So we have done a quote for thirty-three hard copy books for each of us, which is a classroom copy plus a few and a hundred and twenty online licenses for ten years. And the totals are up there for each grade level. And then the total order for McGraw-Hill of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five thirteen cents for the middle school. And then in addition, I asked for three globes that are raised relief geography globes and these would give the kids the ability to actually see the world and see the, the geography of it. And the total for those from, for Nystrom Education was seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
And I guess I would build on the reason that we have hard copy and electronic is at the middle school. We are not one-to-one. So on those days that we do not have access to a laptop cart, which we usually do, but occasionally it does happen that we do have a hard copy to work with. But there are a lot of really neat interactive features with this curriculum versus the other one that we looked at.
When I saw the globe, I thought that was cool because it's, it's nice to have, some things just don't go out of fashion, do they?
Right.
It's nice to see the world is still round and not on a screen.
That's why there's two Pacific Ocean.
Yeah, no, it was great. I, I saw that, I'm like, good call.
But yeah, this company too, this, the people are going to come out and help us with our end of, of training us on all the cool things that these can do. They have Promethean activities and stuff that, we call them flip charts in the classroom, you know, that they're going to walk us through how to do all that. And we had a real good rapport with the salesman and, I mean, like for mine, for civics, I think the copyright was two thousand nine for the most recent book from the Pearson company. So it's kind of a no-brainer for us to go with this, so.
Great.
Thanks for your homework.
Yep, put together a roll.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right, then we also have the high school. And Mr. Duffler, are you going to walk us through that? Wonderful.
We were not fortunate to be able to go with a single.
We were not fortunate to be able to go with a single company. We have a variety of companies and they're basically exclusive to the textbook and department area. We have US history, AP government, psychology, and world history. Those are the four main subjects taught in the high school. Most of those books are early to mid 90s and that's moving towards 20 years old. And that's a pretty serious issue for a US history class. One of the books that I looked at was celebrating the tenets of the Clinton administration and we're talking the first Clinton. So this was a, this was an issue. So we've got US history books and we also got online editions. In most cases, we did both because that's the way that the textbook companies have rolled it out, the interactive online edition and the hardcover book with you. The AP government books and we also have AP government, they call them EPACs, which is equivalent to a electronic textbook. And you'll see that continued on the second page there. The McGraw-Hill psychology books, these are from the early 90s. They actually were the same book that I used when I taught and I started back in 1998 and they were old then. It's the same version, but it's the same textbook with the most recent version. There was not a online variety of that book to use. And then lastly, the Hilton Mifflin for the world history. We have books and you also have the interactive editions and the grand total in the high school, 38,000. And you'll see the grand total, if Laura Lee wants to talk about that, the end of the list there.
Right, so our overall budget is 100,000 and so we came in under that, as you can see. But until we actually place the orders, the, the shipping and handling is all kind of just iffy, so we're really happy that we're right in the ballpark and not over. But I think it's a very good proposal on both the middle school and the high school. Teachers worked hard to put this together, they worked on it all year. I just want to comment that I, I truly believe that the printed word is still very important and so I'm happy that we are continuing with both printed and digital copies.
I want to mention too that, you know, even at the middle school, where the majority of the purchases are online textbooks and we do have a classroom set in case we needed to pull one out, we do realize that there are families at home that do not have access to technology and so we have several prints of each book that will be available to check out of the library. We've been doing that the last couple of years and we've never had an issue where student wasn't able to access the material either on, at home at the computer or from a book they checked out. So we still will be able to cover everyone as much as possible.
Anything else over there? Okay, can we get a motion to accept those curriculum updates? Okay, is there a second? Chelsea? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? There you go.
Wonderful, thank you. I'd also like to tell the public that if they are interested in looking at any of the materials, they would be on display in the high school office and the middle school office, anything that they would like. And the teachers would also be more than happy to answer questions.
Wonderful, thank you. Great. Okay, we can move on to our accident insurance.
Student Assurance Services is who is our current carrier. They came back with a quote. First agency is usually who I gather a second quote from and they weren't able to entertain. The, we have two kind of groups, there's all pupil coverage and group athletic coverage. The group athletic coverage went up just slightly, about $500 from last year, but the all pupil coverage went down because our enrollment is down and it's per pupil and the amount stayed the same. So if you net them out, it's pretty much the same as it was last year. It would be $14,774.40. It's for our student insurance, it's a supplemental to the parents. $2.50 deductible. That's about it. I guess.
I'll make the motion to accept that.
Okay, Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Keith, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes.
Thank you.
Question of CISA representative and convention delegate, I think Keith has done that in the past. Everybody all right with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're appointed. There we go. That was good. And that's all we have here, so now I'll take a motion to review performance evaluate, to go into closed session to review performance evaluation data and consideration of continued employment and considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) will be in closed session for maybe 15 minutes and come out to vote on Mr. Shield's recommendations.
I do, I do have one.
Okay.
Three names I want to mention special. I do want to announce that we have three retirements, additional retirements. Shirley Rosenbusch is our, works in food, school nutrition and also a van driver and she's been an employee for 22 years. Bobby Swanson is a bus driver and she's been driving for 19 years. And Richard Trolley is a bus driver and he's been driving for 12 years. And we want to thank them for all the years of service and appreciate their excellent work with our students and we wish them the very best in retirement.
Okay. So can I get the motion, Keith?
Second.
Second, Lynn. Any discussion? Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
We are in close, thank you, everybody.